Good evening. The Clover School District Board of Trustees welcomes you to today's work session. The CSD Board meets formally twice a month, one work session, one board meeting. The work session format is as follows. Presentations posted on the agenda will be given. There will be an opportunity for questions about the topic discussed. The Board will have the first opportunity for questions. Once the Board has received all feedback requested, members of the audience will also have a chance to ask questions based on the topic listed on the agenda. Those joining us virtually via YouTube can send questions in on the topic through email. Those emails can be sent to csd dot communication at clover dot k twelve dot sc dot U S. There is no public forum during the work session. Members of the audience wishing to speak in public setting can do so at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting on the fourth Monday of each month. Thank you. Without objection, the Board will approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Dr. Quinn, I'll turn it over to you for the branding discussions.
Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have you here. It's nice to have people joining us via YouTube. We have talked about this first topic tonight many, many times. The Board has given us a lot of feedback, and I'm going to ask Ms. Not to come forward right now, our Public Information Officer, and go over where we are after the last board meeting. Of course, tonight, there was no vote, but we do plan and hope that after tonight's final discussion, you will be able to be ready to, excuse me, vote at the March Business Meeting. So Stephanie, if you will walk us through where we are now.
Absolutely. Again, as Dr. Quinn said, we are going to continue in listening in feedback mode this evening. The presentation this evening is divided, first off, among the two schools or between the two schools, starting with Roosevelt and then moving to Lake Wylie High School. And what we'll take a look at in terms of images are, first off, images from last time that had some degree of positive response or interest, and then the presentation of new images based on the feedback that we heard last time. So hopefully, as Dr. Quinn said, we're moving a little bit closer each meeting to being able to come down to a final decision and, you know, if we need to move forward refinements with the graphic artist to do that. So to get us started, from the last meeting with Roosevelt, we had a series of images with the tiger. The feedback that we heard from the Board was that they wanted to see the letters, the lettering moved to that varsity font and to having the letters in blue rather than in gold, as was the case with all of the initial images. So we have option one that we're, again, just looking at from last time. This is the one with the full banner. The tiger's tail is curled up through the R, and you do have a good whole image of the tiger on the rock. And again, we had feedback from the Board about making sure there was a strong emphasis on that image and being able to see all of it. Again, then we had option two. Again, the rock is there, but it's kind of covered under the banner. Then we had option three, no rock at all. And then option four, again, the rock is kind of hidden behind the lettering, but those were the four options that we took a look at last week, then, or, excuse me, last meeting. And then following up on that feedback regarding letters in blue and in the varsity font, we come back with these new images. Option five, again, gives you that full look at the tiger on the rock. It gives you the blue letters, as you requested, and it's pretty clean. Option six, again, no rock, but the varsity lettering, again, is a variation of that earlier logo. Then again, they've dropped, with option eight, the banner kind of underneath the rock. You see a little bit more in option eight than in the earlier one. And then you see the banner version with the gold behind the blue letters and the tiger's tail. You can kind of make out behind the R, but it's not curling through it. So that was something else that you had asked to see last time. So with those nine options for Roosevelt, I'd like to open it up to you for some feedback, consensus building, whatever we have there for those.
In my opinion, one of seven or multiple. The RMS, unless there's a historic reason, seems redundant to me to have Roosevelt Middle School and then RMS as well. So not that big a deal to me. It just seems like we're adding more than we need to. So that would be what I would say. I like option nine the best if the RMS wasn't on the rock. That's just my one opinion.
Thank you.
I like option eight. One thing I would say, just two things about it. I think the varsity lettering is something that the community would appreciate. But just a little thicker. And then also, the head is under the S. Looks to be taking up a little bit of the S. So that it will be clean. And I also like, to Mr. Ballard's point, the fact that there's no RMS on the rock. If there's anything on the rock, it should probably be the block R, in my opinion. But I would opt for option eight.
I like option five. The RMS I can give or take. It doesn't matter. I like the simpleness of that.
I mean, I like option five, and if you could put that block R, like the letter jackets were, on that rock, I could see that. I mean, I don't dislike.
I have no problem with the R. It's just the RMS seems redundant. But I would like the R. I hadn't thought of that. The R would be nice.
I think five or eight, both look good to me. I think we need a block. I think there's more room on five to put the block R versus eight. I'm sure that can space out.
So if we have a lot of, remember, it's going to be on a small space. So if we have a lot of stuff going on, it may get blended in.
Yeah, but as far as jerseys, they may just choose to use that tiger or something rather than this whole thing or the R. Yeah, they're probably not going to use this whole banner. Yeah, or paw or something. As long as they don't turn it sideways.
I think I like the new options. I like the lettering, the varsity lettering better. I think I lean more towards option five as well. To Kieran's point about the lettering being spaced out, I don't know if that's a deliberate design choice or if that's something that we could see closer together. Maybe it would look terrible closer together. I'm not a graphic design expert, but I'm leaning towards the five there. Then I'll certainly agree on the block R versus the RMS.
I'm going to have the same question when we get to the high school. Are we still involving, I'm assuming it would be second graders that would be going to Roosevelt Middle now, or is it third graders?
I could definitely go.
But are we still letting the, are we going to decide and let the kids also have input, or are we past that point?
I think we're past that point right now. We did have some student input early on in the form of a focus group. And again, for Roosevelt specifically, that was the best focus group that we had in terms of, that was the kids coming up with the tiger standing on the rock. And that particular focus group was about 50% students who possibly would attend Roosevelt and 50% Roosevelt alumni. So that was good work.
I know we still haven't even made those decisions yet. I know we're getting close to.
So not to oversimplify this, but is there a way that before, in two weeks, right, we can get option number five with a block R on it, on the rock? And option number eight spaced out a little bit, so we can look at both of those and make a decision between those two? Is that fair? All right.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right. So then we turn our attention to that challenging Lake Wylie High School. Last time, we took a look at some logos that had the Titan on them. Those have all been removed this evening. There was about a 50-50 split among the Board in terms of liking arced lightning or wanting to see some options that had lightning in a horizontal or diagonal orientation. So we bring back to you initially option one and option two, which have the arced lightning. Again, these were images from last time. The designer also brought us a new arced or arched logo as well, and that would be option three. Then they've also brought us four and five with a diagonal lightning bolt through the letters. And again, have tried to do some things, as you had requested, with more white between the outline and the blue letters, because again, your preference was for the blue letters with the gold outline. They also brought us options six and seven. Again, very different here in terms of not putting the lightning bolt behind the letters, but beside it with option six, and then on top of the lettering with option seven. And so with that, we return to our conversation about what we like, don't like, starting to narrow down those options for Lake Wylie High School.
I know some people didn't like the arch bolt. I actually like option three a lot on this, because I think then the teams and whoever's involved can kind of do, I mean, they're not going to use this whole big logo on anything. So they can use the lightning bolt like that. I mean, if you're going on a helmet, there's probably going to be more arch, but whatever. They can figure that out. I really, I like that with the white and the letters that y'all changed or that y'all created and the blue lettering, personally. The one down there at the bottom, I would prefer not ever see that again. Number seven. It looks like the flash showed up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on with that lightning bolt, but.
I'm either.
I'll sort of echo that, not that this side of the table versus that one, but I think, if you remember, I was fairly fond of one and two. I was okay with that. I was okay with the split lightning bolt. So I think option three is a nice, a little more clean version of that, and it's different enough from other bolt logos that I've seen, i.e., the, I guess they're the LA Chargers now. Yeah, I like three, personally.
I like the separation between the Lake Wylie and the hospital.
Did you have anybody mention or what would be people's opinions to having the L and the W slightly larger?
I don't think we've necessarily addressed that conversation. I mean, there were some designs that we looked at last time had a bit of that going on, but those were designs that perhaps had the Titan associated with it, and so those didn't come back this time.
Option four has that.
Or five, I think.
The L is larger, but the W is the same size. I was just, I like option three as well, but I just know that eventually, you know, it's going to be LWHS and.
Right.
L and W were slightly larger, it would stand out. But if I was voting tonight, I like option three as well.
And I would follow that up, Mr. Ballard, by saying that, you know, the next, there is a whole suite of images that we will get from the graphics design team. What we're trying to get to tonight, again, is that primary image. And so when you were talking earlier about, you know, tiger paw prints or just a lightning bolt in isolation, those are, and just the letters LWHS, those kinds of things. So that will all be coming as secondary marks that we'll have to play around with, too.
Thank you for all this hard work.
Sure.
I like option two, actually. That's from the last meeting. Like the way the wording is set out in option two. Option two with one of the other different lightning bolts on top of it.
Like, do you like the bolt from three better?
I don't like the bolt from three at all.
There are bolts that you do like.
Please don't say the flash.
Definitely not one from seven, but something from four, five, or six, just the bolt itself, not the words or the coloring behind the bolt. I don't like that at all, but I think those bolts on top of option two will be pretty clean.
I like the bolt that's, you know, dividing Lake and Wylie. I like the separation.
All right, so to simplify this, can you bring us back? Option three and option two and four combined, maybe?
I like the wording for option two with different bolts on top of it.
Definitely want them on top, not incorporated in some other way.
I like on top, yeah.
Okay.
I like the bolt on top of the words.
We can definitely do that. Anything else? Oh, fair enough. Thank you all.
Back, so you'll have two choices for each of these two mascots, and we'll vote on both, and we'll see which one wins. Majority wins on that. We will also, down the road, begin to work on Liberty Hill Elementary School. Finding a vendor who can do that work. Projects, and I think Kelly Clayton. All of the building projects that we've been under, which I just need to take this moment to say thank you to all the work they've done to manage these projects with us.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn, and to echo those sentiments, members of the Board and administration and staff, for that matter. For the record, Ms. Spencer, I would just like to say that how much I have appreciated being a part of this district for the last 14-plus years, as this may be my last public meeting before you. So I just wanted to make sure I let you all know what a blessing it has been for me to be here and be a part of this community. So tonight, we just wanted to give you an update. It's been about six months since we did so with the financial component, giving you an update of where we stand financially on all of the capital building programs. I think the last update was in August. This would be an update through January 31st of this year. And we'll start with the renovations. I guess I'm driving. There we go. So these were, this was the five or six projects, depending on how you treat the front entrance relocation, that were part of the 17 million that was approved in the spring of '22, I think. And with everything in now, the only outstanding expense that we aren't completely nailed down on is dealing with the site work, the traffic loops. But we're very, very close to wrapping that up. And as you can see, that's what the P in parentheses represents, is just that's in a projected amount, but that is the only expense that we don't have nailed down is for the traffic loops. But all in all, that is a huge, a huge win, success story for the district to do all of those projects. This was a fitness center, a new track widening from six lanes to eight lanes, resurfacing it, new tennis courts, the commons renovation on the interior, as well as the front entrance and the traffic loop rework, all for what was approved, 17 million in 2022, to get all that within the budget. So huge success there. And the track was an add-on, exactly. To the next one is the fine arts addition. This is going on to the back of ninth grade campus. That budget was approved to be 5.1 million, and we are probably 60, 75% through construction on that one. We are projecting all of the furniture and technology expenses, so Matt, be careful. We are just projecting those expenses to be spent at 100%, not over 100%. And you will call me out on the next slide for that. But right now, we're tracking that project to come in right at or just under budget as well. So again, really super job that Southern Builders was doing on that project and really appreciative of their efforts. Now to the not-so-good news, as we get to Lake Wylie High School, speaking of the branding, I wish it were that easy on the construction side. This was a project that was bid back in May. We went through a VE process, and then last time we met in August. This was awarded. Since then, the budget was 172, the bond was 156. If you all remember, the district is kicking in the balance of 16-plus million. Where we are to date is encumbered right around 148 million. That includes the site work contract with Hoopah, as well as the building contract with Contract Construction. It's a little play on words. We still have athletics and some landscaping to go, so there's still some work to do. But projecting the furniture and the technology expenses, again, being spent at 100%, there is a projected of a small balance remaining there on the soft cost, the owner's soft cost, that's helping mitigate some of this. And if you all will just remember, back in August, we shifted all of the contingency to the construction side to help offset that overage. But as of right now, we're, you know, we're tracking about a $5 million shortfall on this project with the athletics and landscaping still to go, okay? The athletics is scheduled to be advertised next week with a mid-April bid opening, and the landscaping would be shortly thereafter, so that we can try to take advantage of the fall to get most of the plantings in this fall, okay? We want to get the athletics under contract so that we can get two full growing seasons on the turf, on the springing or siding, whichever one we end up going with.
In terms of what we're getting for this extra, the 177. Mind everyone about the third floor and all of the.
Yes, ma'am. So the 148 does include the alternates for building out the third floor, as well as the terraces throughout the building. So those were add-backs from when we met in August, so that's part of the difference here, part of the delta. And I think that's the only two alternates that have been added back. We're working through a slate of change requests now, trying to mitigate those, and we're also scouring the drawings, trying to find additional savings. But the A E V is another one, the sound systems that we are now working on to try to mitigate, so.
This one.
And then the last one was Liberty Hill. This is the 8% project. The budget was set at 52 million, I think it was last year, early '23. This is, this project was bid in the summer, or it might have been '22. I think it was '23. This is '25 now, isn't it? Time does fly. So yes, '23, bidded in summer of '24. Ed Con is the contractor on this one. And where we stand to date with them, with nothing else projected for construction, is right around 47. That also includes a couple of alternates that were added for the 12-classroom addition, which I completely agree, you'll never get those 12 classrooms. It was around 12,000 square foot. The price on bid day was fantastic number. You'll never get it built for that later, so definitely agree with doing that. That's driving the shortfall on the construction side. Again, the contingency was shifted to the construction budget to help offset that, but there's also a balance being carried for the soft cost on this one to help mitigate some of that. And I will also point out that on this particular project, we did VE down around $800,000, 770 and some change, to be exact. So we're carrying that in allowances. So this project is carrying about a 1.2 million balance of allowances that will go back to you to go elsewhere, okay? So that's not factored into these numbers. I'm just letting you, making you aware that there is a healthy allowance balance on this project to help offset or mitigate some of these overages, okay? And just projecting the furniture and the technology expenses to be spent at 100%, you're looking at about four, three, three and a half, four million dollar shortfall. That's where we stand to date.
Without the allowances.
Without the allowances, yes. Any questions? Let me try to answer it for everyone before I.
I just have one, sorry. I should have said it when you were at the high school. Could you, for clarification, just mention what athletics means, so that people will know what they're getting with that word?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, so we are bidding out the ball field construction. Not a stadium, but baseball, softball, tennis courts, track, band field, springing, irrigation, and the lighting of those fields. So that's all being, that was all separated from the building package to try to package all that up and bid separately to get a more competitive number and also to get the building on the street sooner, so.
A lot of VE work on that.
The high school, yeah, that, we ended up VE-ing that one, if you remember, back at the August, it was around 10 million. So that helped get that number down around the 123, I think, John, is where we landed on that contract with Contract. And again, it's a play on words with the name of the contractor, but yes.
I know you get regular updates, so these numbers aren't necessarily a big surprise, but we, coming in over budget on the projects that you want, but you also have to think about all the things that you can do to also fund those things. We're going to bring Mr. Love up here in just a second to talk through how we can fund it, even though we've got some projects coming in over. But we have definitely seen a pattern since the pandemic of construction prices being more than what they were originally projected. And we have to VE that, which means cutting down, about how we extend our funding in such a way. And Mr. Love is going to come and try to explain that so that we can stay true to what we told him. Unless you have any questions for.
Audience as well. Any questions for the audience?
On the cost.
Or any online, Ms. Not? And if you have a question, did we miss any questions on the first presentation as well?
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
And thank you for all the things that you have done for us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Quinn, and members of the Board. We all remember that when we started down this road a few years ago, we had a bond referendum that failed and one that passed. One that passed gave us $156 million, in which to build a high school, and we still needed the elementary school. So we developed. So we developed a funding plan to remain at that level of 46 mills so that we could construct the two schools and stay within the limit that was approved of the 46 mills. Now, with the two schools, we issued, we concluded to issue general obligation bonds, which the board can issue within 8% of its assessed value. We concluded that we could build the elementary school in that methodology. And what we did was, two years ago, we borrowed about $11 million and put it toward the elementary school. This last year, we borrowed $14 million and put it to the elementary school. That gives us about $24 million. I'm rounding off the numbers just a wee bit. And we're now to the point that we need to borrow some more. We have paid the $14 million, so those dollars, all that we have previously borrowed, have been paid, and we're out of debt on that side of the house. However, we just saw that we're going to need about 34 million more, 32 million more, somewhere in that range, to conclude the purchase and construction of the elementary school. So we will proceed down that same road for this next year in terms of borrowing part of this dollars, and we will look at issuing bonds in August to September of about $32 million. We need to do it at that point in time because the county tax office issues their data that ask us to come back to them and say, what is our bond payment due in order that it can be calculated in the October tax bills? And we want to make sure that we fully utilize the 46 mills. We don't want to leave any of this so that we can use that to pay down this next spring for that amount that we would borrow this time. And if it, if we're able to get 15 or 16 million of the 32 that we would borrow, that will leave us only 15 or 16, maybe 17, to finance over about four years, which would help reduce the potential of the tax levy for the construction of the elementary school. And we would be paid out of the elementary school in less than 10 years at the dollars that are being estimated. Now, we still have to deal with the high school, of course. And then our band that we have outstanding will, will close in October. We have borrowed thus far 120 million towards construction of the high school, and we have 36 billion of the 156 million that the voters authorized left. We would borrow that this October to finish construction. As far as we could get there, with, because we knew it was going to cost a little over 170 million, that we'll leave a little bit short. We would issue a special obligation bond when those dollars are gone in order to complete the construction of the high school. And we would need a board resolution sometime in October in order to authorize that particular transaction. And these bonds, we would predict, would be paid over 14 to 15 years. Special obligation bond does not affect us on our 8% limit. But we would plan, then it comes time to fully fund and fully pay off the 156 million of bonds. So we, all this happens in this, between December and next spring. Those bonds would typically be issued very much like their existing bonds and be paid out over 20 years, maybe 25, depending upon the cash flow. Now, as we put these bonds together and the payments together, we have to watch the existing bonding that are outstanding. We have some that will be paid off in the 27-year from the older bonds, some in '34. Those bonds will then be used, those payments will then be used, so those bonds to help provide the cash flow for the existing general obligation bonds we've issued and the voter-approved bonds that were issued. When those bonds come off, we can use those dollars to, to fund that, and we, we will then be able to stay at least for next year within the 46-millimeter limit that we've promised. We can't promise we'll stay that down the road after that because there's so many unknowns in the calculation of, of these dollars. So, and as a general, in a short, short way of saying it, that's, that's a summary of how we would do it. We will continue the borrowing of the general obligation bonds like we have done thus far. We will need a board resolution authorizing us to issue the additional 32 million no later than May. If we could get it earlier, we'd, that would be helpful, but no later than May. And then we will do the same thing in December for the remaining bonds for the high school and with the special resolution bond. So I think this was all put in this, in the slides, so I just talked over it. Are there any questions?
So we're going to do the best, we're going to do everything we can to stay at the 46 mills as long as we can.
We would, we, we planned, Bob Dameron, with the, with the financial folks, and I plan to keep it as long as we can. We, we know that's the limit that we would like to stay with, but that, that too depends upon what the assessment is and certainly what our needs are in the future. But that's, that's the basis on which we made our calculations.
Talk a little bit about the interest as well and how that may help offset this.
We are earning some interest as these dollars are in the bank. When we issue bonds, we, they are here. We don't go down to the bank each time we have need of a bill or a draw to pay, and we are earning some interest. Unfortunately, we don't get to keep it all because we're under arbitrage regulations in that we can't earn more than we're paying on the tax-free bonds in order that our bonds would remain tax-free. Of the issues we've had received thus far, we earned a little over $2 million, but we had to pay a million to the feds. We don't pay it back. It goes directly to the Treasury. So, but nonetheless, that and a premium on the bonds that we have earned will give us roughly in the neighborhood of $6 million, we think, by the time we get to the final payment of the high school. And so that was, instead of looking at 17 million that we talked, that Kelly talked about, we may be in the 11 or 12 million range, but we'll assign all earnings from these bonds and what we have in order to minimize the last amount of draw they would have to have.
If, if we need to use the COB on funding mechanism, is there a cap on how much we can borrow?
It is based upon the value of the HVAC equipment. It's like a lease purchase arrangement, so, so if we're looking at 13, 14 million dollars or something like that, it would be our cap.
That add-in, the new schools HVAC?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that's only on those. The idea is that you could pick it up and move it. It's like, like the, it's a lease purchase in a sense, like the computers we're using from Apple. It's just bigger dollars, longer, longer term.
Any other questions on funding for the two new schools? Of, or board, I ask you, we'd like to bring you the, the bond resolution that you need before May. We'd like to go ahead and bring it to you in March, or would you like to do April?
Whenever Franny can get it together, we'll be fine.
We'd like to shoot for March if, if Ms. Heiser can get it worked out, but at the very latest April.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any questions from the audience or from the line?
Okay, so the theme of tonight has to do a lot with money and a lot to do with issues that our, our taxpayers and our residents have been very much interested in. This topic will also fall into that category. As most of you know, we have an impact fee in Clover School District along with Fort Mill. And at the five-year mark, there is a requirement for a review of that impact fee. So I'd like to talk to you tonight, board, about where we are in this process, about what the current statutes say we have to do when it's time to review your impact fee, what York County's process is, our current status of our impact fee, and our plan going forward. And then I'd like to get your feedback on that plan because there's some actions that have to take place pretty immediately after tonight. We'll vote again in March to go forward, but there's some actions that I want to do to be ready in March to bring it back to you for a vote. So I'd like to do, have some feedback when I get to that portion of tonight's presentations. So to start first with the statutes. In South Carolina, there are two statutes that are related to an impact fee. It's called the Impact Fee Act, and you can see it's Title VI, Chapter 1, Article 9, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Act, also in Title VI, Chapter 29, Article 5. I've pulled out some of the salient points to kind of go over some definition of terms for you tonight. First, from the Impact Fee Act, it says that the local planning commission shall review and update the capital improvement plan and impact fee in the same manner and on the same review cycle as the government entity's comprehensive plan or elements of it. And basically, just to kind of define that, the planning commission is an entity in the county that has the first review, as far as the statute concerns, with approving an impact fee. The, the planning commission is a process you go to first, and then they will make a recommendation to the county council of what they review for the impact fee, and then the county council is the ultimate body that approves it. But in that planning commission review process, there is a capital improvement plan, which we call that our 10-year facility study. And our 10-year facility study was last done in 2019. You're going to see that in a slide coming up. But at the same time that you do that 10-year facility study, you can also look at an impact fee study. And that comprehensive plan is the comprehensive plan that you do, the study you do with, in our case, we've done it with Tischler-Bice, where they put together a formula that makes up your impact fee. So that's what all those terms mean in that first phrase. Also, from the Comprehensive Plan Act, it says that the local planning commission shall review the comprehensive plans, and remember, that's your impact fee study, or elements of it as necessary, but not less than once every five years to determine whether changes in the amount and kind or direction of the development of the area or other reasons make it desirable to make additions or amendments to the plan. So again, defining some terms, you see there that even though we do a 10-year facility study and a 10-year capital improvement plan, every five years, the planning commission has to review and say, hey, where are you in that plan? And are there reasons that would change what your impact fee should be? So if you are following what Fort Mill has done, they had a 10-year capital improvement plan, but they have to build more schools. Their plan is changing because they're growing so fast. So they not only did a new capital improvement plan, they did a whole new impact fee study to, to complement that. So that's, can be done, or you can keep the same impact fee study and have that reviewed at the five-year mark. You just have to make sure it's reviewed at the five-year mark. And then finally, from the Comprehensive Plan Act, it says, it says the comprehensive plan, which is your impact pack fee plan, including elements of it, must be updated at least every 10 years. And so it must coincide with your capital improvement plan. So those are the laws. Before I go on, any questions about anything I've said so far? Nope, all right, moving on. So as far as York County goes, they have a process that they follow in compliance with state statute. And so I want to review that process. I've taken the liberty of adding a preferred timeline for Clover School District. This is something that if you tell me that you want me to bring you this review plan for a vote in March, the end of this month, between now and then, I would like to go over this preferred timeline with the county so that I'm bringing you a report after having spoken with the county. So tonight's for discussion. You're going to give me some feedback, and I'd like to meet with the county on whether this timeline is possible. So here it is. The first thing we would do is we would send a letter to the county council and county manager. I'd like to do that by the end of this month after a possible board vote. And that would basically be asking them to consider a resolution to direct the planning commission to review our impact fee. They've got to do it every five years, but the council has to actually issue a resolution for them to review it. I'd like to be sure we have all of that ready to go and have that process underway by May of 2025. Then I would like to get busy working behind the scenes to update a few of the studies that we believe the planning commission is going to need to review as a part of the review. And I'd like to have all of those studies done and underway and completed by July of 2025. We would like to get our plan to the county, uh, planning commission by August of 2025 to do that first review process. If all goes well, they'll make a recommendation to the county council for an ordinance with our impact fee. We'd like to be at that process by September of 2025. There are three readings. We'd like to finish and have approval by the council, if possible, by December of 2025 because our fee actually sunsets January 2026. So it's a 10-month-from-now timeline, but you can see it has very doable, I think, points that we can get the work done if all goes well. Any questions about the timeline?
Do we actually, do you need a board vote to send the letter to?
That's what I'd like to have at the end of this month. And so pending the discussion you have about this plan that you're getting ready to see, if you're ready, I'd like for you to vote on that in March, and then I'd like to get busy sending that letter. Between now and then, I'd like to meet with the county to say, hey, is this timeline doable? And are, are we thinking the right way? So I'll set up those meetings between now and our March 25th board meeting. Let's see. Let me look at that and think about that a minute. We are not proposing to do a whole new study, which you'll see in just a minute on the next plan. That's the biggest cost. You can also contract with, with someone that does your demographic studies and looks at your growth trajectory. We believe we can do that in-house. But, so right now, under this, no, but if there are some expenses, I'll be bringing that back to the board for discussion. All right, so now let's talk about what the current impact fee is and how that process works for Clover School District. On the page you, there, you see the front page of our impact fee study. You can see that the final draft that we brought to you was in June of 2020. We are currently in the building process for that plan, that impact fee study. As you know, and we just went over, we are in the building process to meet the needs, and that's reflected in that capital improvement plan and in this impact fee study. In terms of what Clover School District did before, and we did spend funds on this before, Mr. Meeks, so we had Dale Holden do an enrollment study and a demographic study, as well as a capacity study. We believe we can update those in-house now because virtually nothing has changed but our enrollment. Our enrollment has gone up in five years. Our demographics, our line, our trajectory of growth might have changed slightly, but we believe we can produce tho, that study. And then our capacities, how much room do we have in the current buildings? Well, we've changed Bethany a little bit, put four classrooms in. We've changed Oak Ridge Middle School a little bit. We've put some mobile units in. We've added to the ninth grade campus that Fine Arts wing that you heard described earlier, but for music. But basically, all of the other buildings are exactly the same. So we would update that capital improvement or that capacity study, excuse me, for just those projects. So that 2018 would be our baseline, and we would update those studies. Our 10-year facility study was done in August 2019 with Coming at the time. We do want to do another 10-year facility study, but we're still in the middle of building this one. So there'll be a time when we need to project to do another one, and we would like to do that work down the road. But we, I don't believe we have to do it now with regard to where we are because we're still building the current study or the current plan. We did our Tischler-Bice study, as I showed you, June of 2020, and that study is still reflecting the needs of that capital improvement plan. We got county council approval of our study in 2021, of January of 2021. And so for a five-year review, you can see January 2026 is when we will need to go for In our current impact fee study, you can see here the amounts that we qualified for, and the way that you refer to this is the maximum allowable. So the county council could have approved a maximum allowable fee for a single-family home of $15,035. And you can see over to the right, we were awarded $4,000, and that was council discussion and council decision. Multi-family, which are apartments and townhomes, we could have been approved for $7,430. We were actually approved at $1,009.76. And for a mobile home, $9,008.42, we were actually approved for 2,006.18. So in the last five years, we've collected just over $5 million, $5 million in impact fee amounts. Now, so you can multiply that out by about four to know that we could be somewhere around 20 million. You just heard us talk about shortfalls. You just heard us talk about shortfalls in our projects. So there was an opportunity through impact fees to meet those shortfalls. We're funding it in another way, and that's what you do. But it, we had a real opportunity here to, to get some of the funds we needed to meet the shortfall and the higher construction costs. So for our review, that we would like to go back to the county for our five-year review, we would like to make the following proposal. And this is what I'm going to need your feedback on, Board, if this is the right approach. We'd like to meet with county administration to discuss what I just went over, and I'd like to do that between now and March 25th, when you meet again, so that I can bring you an update. We would like to begin the work to update our enrollments and our growth projections. Those are the growth projection lines and the actual enrollments that we've seen over the last five years. We believe we can do that work in-house. We'd like to make some minor adjustments to our capital plan, our ten-year facility study, for those schools that we've added some capacity in, which is not very many, but definitely Bethany, definitely O M S. We would like to propose that the council accept our current ten-year facility capital improvement plan. It's still the plan we're building out. And we ask them to maintain our current Tischler-Bice impact fee study. We don't believe we need to do another study for a different amount. We simply would like the committee to fund the current amount that we are, we, the maximum allowable that we could qualify for. And that's what will be our ask at this review period up until and including through January 26. We certainly think our timeline will get us there before the impact fee has to be fully reviewed, and we have an aggressive timeline to do that. And then shortly after this work, we would need to begin to do another long-range facility study so that we know what's next. And if there, then if we need another impact fee study, we do it at that point in time. So that's our plan, Board. I would like to hear your pros and cons, your thoughts about that, anything you'd like for me to consider changing in that plan? And then we'll talk about whether or not you'd like to have me bring this proposal for approval on the 25th. So first, pros and cons. Anything good you see or bad?
Dr. Quinn, what was, what was the thinking behind not asking for an advance and keeping it at fifteen thousand? Other than not having to have another Tischler-Bice study done?
So we believe that if we had been funded at the current amount, that that current amount would have helped us get to the shortfall. And we also know that there's a good number of homes that are being built in our next five years that are covered under the development agreement and won't have an impact fee, but there are a number of homes that will. So we, we felt like, rather than trying to go back and get a higher fee right now, which with construction costs coming in so much higher, I do believe our impact fee study would take that fee up. We feel like we need to get what we could have gotten from the very beginning, and that would take us through this five-year period for when we do another capital improvement plan.
Dr. Quinn, I'd imagine that one of the other concerns would be just time, right? If we had to commission another study, we'd have to wait for that. Possible?
Time is definitely a factor, also cost. It's, it's fairly expensive to do an impact fee study in the middle of a budget year when you haven't put that in the budget. Other questions? Any concerns from the board?
The concern is it depends on, you know, the county's acceptance of the, the studies.
That's right. So, for example, if we go and they say, no, you're still going to have to do another study, then we may have to do that. But we're hoping that the, being able to show that the current study is still the capital improvement plan that we are currently building, that the tie is still there and the need is still there. I mean, I think worst-case scenario, they keep us at the same level of funding that we currently are. But we'd like to ask them to reinstate the maximum allowable.
Possible that they could review the study and give us, not meet, not go all the way to the fifteen thousand, but even more than the four?
That's right. They, it's totally at their discretion what they do. Our premise is, you know, you justify what you need and you present what you need and you hopefully get funded at what you need.
I know we're comparing apples and oranges, but we just saw the other day, they had a York County Council meeting where they discussed moving Fort Mill for fifteen thousand.
Right at thirty, yes.
I know there have been changes on the council. I know things have happened, but is there any logical explanation for why, I mean, York got nothing, Clover got less than they were asking for, but Fort Mill seems to be able to raise the bar every, and like I said, I know it's apples and oranges, but...
Yeah. I would just say, in Fort Mill's defense, they are building schools just about every two to three years. So the, the growth there is just at a rate that the, the community can barely manage. And it is, and it, it doesn't appear to slow down. So the justification for the fee going up is there. We feel like we, we have a great fee. If we could be funded at our maximum allowable, that would help us get through this next building phase, or, excuse me, this current building phase. We'd love to build a stadium. We'd love to, you know, there are things that we'd like to be able to do that we need to generate some funds to do. All right, it is, does anyone have a problem with March the 25th, me bringing you this for a vote? All right, that's the plan then. Thank you very much.
Questions from the audience who are online, Miss Knott?
Jenkins?
The maximum allowable for a single family was fifteen oh three, oh three five for a single-family home, and then you can see the difference for a multifamily and a mobile
Only if we go through another whole impact fee study. And I do believe if we did that, because construction costs drive a lot of that number, and they have definitely gone up in the last five years, as we've talked about in prior presentations tonight.
Just as a reminder, we're, we're talking about newly built homes. We're not talking about, there are no impact fees on homes that are already built, and it's just on new construction.
That's just on new construction. It's a way for growth to pay for growth. Any other questions? Nope? Well, I mean...
I guess I switched, Marty.
Right, right. What I'm hearing from Mr. Jenkins is, is there any sentiment from the board to do the new study, or are we comfortable with keeping the study we have until we do our ten-year facility plan again?
I think until we update it, we would have to spend, we spent fifty thousand, I think, last time, and it'd probably be a lot more than that to get the Tischler-Bice study. Also, our, I'm pretty sure our fee on January of 26 is when it has to be revised or reviewed.
We, it has to be done by then. The process needs to be...
We would have to get everything done by January 1st if we had to do this new stuff, and I don't even know that they could do it.
I talked with Carson Bice, and he would expedite it as quickly as he can, but...
For free, I'm sure.
Yeah, no. I don't know.
Charge for that.
It was a very divisive issue. It was one of those things that we thought would help the bond, and it ended up really hurting the bond. And so we recognize that, and we want to be respectful of that. That's probably, at least from my standpoint, another reason why sticking with the current fee, but getting the maximum allowable would have maybe get us through this next building phase.
Dr. Quinn, I, I know this is probably an impossible question to answer, but do we have any rough idea about how much possible new construction we can sustain and hold? I mean, certainly there's going to be a, at some point, I mean, we're going to run out of land at some point. I know, I know that's a moving target.
Well, I'll tell you, these building, we were adding three schools to the fleet in 2026, and that will give us some comfortable space to grow. Every school, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, we're trying to get every school at eighty percent capacity or lower. So we will have some room, but in terms of how much is too much, that's, that's the Fort Mill question.
I meant land for new homes and new construction to be built.
Wow, because Fort Mill hadn't run out yet.
They'll, they'll find some way to squeeze.
You know, land with good utilities and all those kinds of things. I mean, we are starting to get very tight.
The reason I ask, I, I've just heard from some people that make the statement that we missed the boat with the first bond, I mean, with the, excuse me, the, the first impact fee, because you, I mean, you just mentioned we lost out on almost twenty million dollars.
Yep, lost out on about fifteen. We'd have about twenty now. So yes, yeah, that was, that was the time. That was the time. But that said, we will, we will continue to see growth, and I believe beyond this next five-year period, we'll continue to see growth, and that would be a good time to decide. A board at that time could decide if they want to do a whole new impact fee study, to Mr. Jenkins' question, and see what is needed then.
And a lot of these homes have been grandfathered in, too, and they're still being built with not even the four thousand dollar impact.
Yeah, the eight hundred and forty-two homes at Westport are grandfathered in.
To Mr. Jenkins' point as well, we, there's a possibility the county's interpretation of this is different than ours.
Right.
Come back and tell us, you have to have a new study. So we may be back at square one either way, but, um, well, and I, and I, and that...
I'll take that bet.
That would be nice, but I don't know if I'd wager too much on that happening, but, um, but yeah, I mean, I, you talk about demographics on the council and, and things changing, the opinions maybe change. Happen with Fort Mill, but I just, there's, there's no way to know that right now. And I think with the timeline that we have, it would be...